Okay, it's 9:00 AM, November 9th, 2020. Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Wayne Robbins, Pastor of the Laverneia District. Price.
Again, Father, we come to you this morning. We're thankful for just another day of life. We're thankful for all the blessings, Father, this community in which we live, this county, this state, this country. Father, we just pray that all decisions that are made, Father, will glorify you, that all that is done will bring our country closer to you, that those who serve will have a mindset to remain in God we trust. Father, we thank you, we trust you, and we need you, Father. And we just pray that all those in this community will continue to, just, Father, have the leadership here that helps this community thrive, the decisions that are made. Father, we know that there's been some tragedies, as happens with those who've lost their lives, young people, and in the Laverneia area. And just, Father, we know that, we ask your healing, we ask your comfort for those families, for the friends, for all those that were affected by that and other things that are going on in this county, in this community. Father, we just ask that we lean upon you, Father, just to guide this meeting, guide all the decisions that are made. And, Father, we love you so much. Thank you for your son, Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments. Hello, is this Rhonda Rycall?
Yes.
This is Judge Jackson in Commissioners Court. This, we've called you to make a public comment, if you would like to make that public comment this time.
Ah, yes, I would. The dog-brooding statute is not being enforced. A neighbor's dog has been killing my goats, and one neighbor got rid of his dog, thank God, because he couldn't see what was in the can, and they would dig under, and that day even broke my can. But I would like to know exactly why. It's because the sheriff's telling me that it's a fair discretion whether or not to find the people. And he told me point-blank that I didn't have to come find his dog. And I said, well, would you like to see a video of the dog killing my goats? And he said, no. That was Officer Whigley. So I contacted the county attorney, and evidence in their stuff all in then, because she asked me to get a lead to get in touch with him and find out what was going on. And she said they haven't responded to her either. So I'd like to know what's going on with our sheriff's department.
Okay, we cannot answer a public comment because it's not on the agenda?
And is it on the agenda?
Well, that's, you'd have to talk to one of the Commissioners or myself and get it on the agenda, but that is something that's going to be between you and the sheriff's office.
So y'all have no control at all, or you write the statutes that they don't have?
We don't write the statutes. We, we're in Commissioners Court, the sheriff's office governs itself more or less. They're elected, he's an elected official, and that's a different, different office than yours.
He's not elected anymore. When did they change, when did the new sheriff take over?
January 1st.
Thank God. I'm trying to hold out until then. My goats are getting ready to kid, and that's what they go after mostly, is the kids.
Yes, ma'am.
Although they did kill one of my goats, Nancy, which really upset me. So there's, y'all can't do anything, in other words.
Well, then pass the word along.
God, well, what's my solution, to sue the sheriff's office?
Well, communicate with the sheriff's office and the county attorney's office what you've been doing, just, I guess, address it a little more.
Well...
Like I said, we cannot really comment on this, mention more than I can. This is just a public comment session.
Okay, well, my comment is the dog-brooding laws are not being enforced, and what is a citizen supposed to be more enforced?
Okay. Thank you. Do we have another one besides that one?
That's it, Judge.
Okay, now here we, we've got one here where the goats have survived. This is from the 4H, Wilson County, there's two, Wilson County Expo Center, thank you for allowing us to use the barn today for the Prospect Show. We appreciate you supporting our club. And this is from the Wilson County 4H Goat Club.
If they had an expert, I might.
Okay, is that all of it? Eva?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Four, Certificate of Completion and Award.
I have none, Judge. I have paid my public information.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, Certificate of Force Completion, Public Information Act, I, Eva Martina, certify that I have completed the course of training of the Texas Public Information Act that satisfied the legal requirements of Government Code Section 552.012. Certificate is issued, effective date, 3rd of November, 2020. Is that all of that? Okay, now we're going to Agenda Item Number Five, Extension Activity Reports, the handouts that we've got, and I've got one from the COVID.
COVID has sure slowed them down.
What's that?
I said COVID has sure slowed them down.
Oh, yeah.
They're still busy, or active, but just not nearly ready.
Okay, moving right along. Agenda Item Number Six, Larry Wiley, Commissioner, Precinct 4, discussing possible action to abandon County Road 445 per unanimous request of a jointe landowner. Wiley?
Yes, Judge, the County Road 445 is four-tenths of a mile off of County Road 444. It is a very narrow road. There's a couple of places where it's difficult to get by and a maintainer, and unless we have the combination to the gate in the back, the maintainer has to back a quarter, well, four-tenths of a mile to get out. It is, there are two landowners that surround it. There is a concern for public safety, for their safety. There are activities that may be taking place at the end of the road that are not, not legal, and they have requested that the road be closed, and they have all signed to that effect, and all agreed. There should be, I have a copy of that right here.
And the judge does too. It's Exhibit A.
Yeah. And I'm in favor of it. There is no public, from the standpoint of a public need, there really isn't a public need other than there are two homes on the property. One of them is owned by Sanderland, and the other one is owned by the Winds. The Winds, the road is sort of a north-south road. The Winds own the property on both sides, all the way to the end, and Mr. Sutherland owns the property at the end. They're here if there are any questions that you might have.
Okay, the road is going to go to the Winds? Is that correct?
Yes, the way it was written up, the, they own the property on both sides, so that property would go to them. I think as, as a lot of our roads are, I think they're, they've been paying taxes on that road, but they have to guarantee entrance to the Sutherland's or whoever might follow them to that property.
Okay. And Mr. Sutherland, do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
You're going to be surrounded by the Winds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they're going to give you access? That's, that's my main concern, but I'm good with it if y'all are good.
Yeah, we have our own bulldozer and stuff. We've been maintaining the road ourselves. Like he was saying, there's just no way to turn around, it's so narrow.
One question. Do they require sometimes a documented easement?
What the statute says is they have to sign a petition asking Commissioners Court to do this, and then if y'all agree, all five of you have to sign an order making this grant to them. Then if they, let's just say they want to have it surveyed and add it to the public record, they can do that, but we don't have it surveyed for them.
I just thought there was some kind of statute, I'm sorry, that prevents people from being landlocked, and I don't know if they have another easement to that property or not, so I just wanted to make sure we met our requirement.
They do not have another easement. When I talked to Tom about this, the county attorney, he indicated that there was no way that could be denied. It was, I forget what the term was that he used, but the fact is, is that you cannot deny them.
I think they can be landlocked. They can't landlock somebody else. That's why they all had to agree.
Right, okay.
And I will say, the statutes dealing with various things, abandonment, et cetera, that you do with county roads is none too clear, but we tried to cover all bases.
So that will have to be something that y'all do, Mr. Sutherland, you'll have to get something to show that there is an easement to your property.
Yeah, I guess they have an attorney draw it up and get the Winds to sign? That's not a problem, sir.
Good deal.
And their address is going to change, because I think y'all's property was addressed off of that county road that we abandoned?
Okay.
So then the address is going to change?
Okay.
Because that, the owner sits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and it'll be determined based on where your access onto the 444 is?
So once a court grants us your blessing, then you'll get the bid, and I'll have an attorney drop us a separate instrument to sign that just gives us access to our property, right?
Once, once the court votes?
Yes, ma'am.
Assuming they vote unanimously and sign the document, I'll have, we'll have to wait a few days because the county clerk needs to process it, but then I will get you an original to take to your attorney or however you want to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll make sure you get that.
We've been friends with the Winds for over 40 years, so, you know, you have to have everything.
It's usually the other way around.
Yeah, the county attorney indicated to me that nothing was necessary, but if I were in your shoes, I would want to have a document. You've been friend with, friends with them for 40 years, but 40 years from now?
Right.
You don't know who's going to be there, and you want to be protected.
Yes, sir.
Judge, I make a motion, we approve.
One second. Mr. Wiley, you said about Commissioner Hyatt, we approve the transfer of this county road. Is there any more comments, discussion, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Perry? You all got it? Build a gate across the town.
I'll come and get my sign pulled.
I'll pull it out for you.
Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Seven, Richmond, Jackson County, Judge Brenda Elfridino, County Auditor, discussing acceptance of an engagement letter for the 2019?
Thank you.
External financial audit. You got that? Have you got that?
She said that she emailed it to you on Friday.
She sent it to me on Friday?
She emailed it to you?
I wasn't here Friday, and I have not looked at my emails this morning.
Okay. Go down there and get it.
Okay, what this is, it's a different, independent audit company, the one that we used last year gave us a bid for this year. Last year, it was in the area of $38,000. This year, it was $80,000. They submitted, the new company that Brenda approached, the one she'd worked with before, is out of the Shirts area, and we also have to put them up, while they're here, auditing us. So they will be local, and they're down to below $40,000. Let's get the exact numbers. I remember we talked about it several different times.
Previous, or last year, Wind put up room board.
Yes.
This year?
This year we're going to have both.
I think also a change, if I may, is the inclusion of a single audit for the grants. Since we're over $750,000 in awards from the federal government, we're required to do a single audit for just the grants. So that's also...
And this will be included in that?
Yes, sir.
The other audit company did an excellent job. I think they, the price they gave us, it includes some of the things that they did. I think it'll try to catch up this year.
Well, Mr. Vina, you've done excellent job. I trust her judgment, and I would trust her recommendation for a second company. I will make a motion, we...
We'll get to the, hang on, we'll get to names soon, as Kristin gets back up here. We'll move with her.
Judge, I have to make a call real quick.
Okay, while we're waiting on Kristin, let's move to Agenda Item Number Eight, and we'll come back to Agenda Item Number Seven. Agenda Item Right, Hunter Skip, Commissioner, Precinct Three, discussing take action on AT&amp;T FirstNet communication devices for county employees as presented by Stephen Tuntz. Mr. Tuntz?
Thank you all very much for having me. My name is Stephen Tuntz, so I cover FirstNet for the Alamo area council government and the Villarreal County Council government for AT&amp;T. I don't know the popularity of FirstNet, but I tried to give you a little bit of a brief overview. If you take a look at the first slide there, the timeline for it goes back to the 9/11 Commission, back in March of 2010. The FCC followed the 9/11 Commission's recommendation to create a nationwide public safety broadband network. In 2012, the FirstNet Authority was created, and that contract was 25 years and awarded to AT&amp;T in March of 2017. If you notice there, in December of 2017, all states had to either opt-in to FirstNet or build their own network out. Obviously, all states opted in at that time, which brings us to today. There's two ways that you can get on it, looking at the next page here. FirstNet is a nationwide public safety broadband network. You can either be a primary user, which is your police fire EMS, or any of, anybody that responds to 911, and then you have extended primary users, which would include yourselves, anybody that you deem necessary to support public safety in the time of an emergency. You also have the ability to put utilities, et cetera, on as an extended primary user. Now, if you look at the next slide, this really is the details of FirstNet, and I'm not going to read this whole thing here to you. Most important thing is there is no throttling for FirstNet customers anywhere in the country. You get 24/7, 365 priority and preemption, so as we built out this network, it gives you the ability to take priority over the general population, 24/7, 365. We're approximately 80% done with that, and this was, again, we refer to it as Band 14, but this was specifically allocated to AT&amp;T to build out over that, build and maintain over 25 years. Now, if you look at the next slide, the color is there, this is over to the right where the lighter blue is our existing LTE coverage, and then as we built out the dedicated structure, you can see the darker shades of blue there, which is Band 14. Looking at the next slide, you can see this is the current build-out of Band 14, or really LTE plus Band 14 in Wilson County. All the sites there that have the red circle around them have Band 14, have the FirstNet network already built out to them. You also have access, as part of the contract, we had to build out 76 deployables, which are sell-on wheels, sell-on light trucks, in addition to the AeroStat, also known as a blimp. That's to provide coverage in emergency situations. We've had that out in Louisiana for the recent hurricanes, but we've also had them in Houston and along our coastline as well, and we're also exploring the use of drones to provide emergency coverage. In terms of milestones, now that we're three, three years plus into it, we've got 1.3 million connections nationwide, 12,000 public safety, public safety agencies, 700 markets with Band 14. We expect to be completed close to the end of this year across the nation for that Band 14 coverage, in addition to the 76 deployables that are already built out, and over 100 FirstNet-ready devices that are capable of accessing Band 14. It does not end there. If you look at the next slide, this is a slide provided to me by the FirstNet Authority, which is the division of the Department of Commerce. It is really about getting feedback from agencies, putting it back into the network so that it essentially becomes a self-funding, public-private partnership. And then on the last page is the real, is the contracting process. So we are negotiated through the DIR. You can see the details there, but there's really three primary plans for smartphones. It's $39.99 for unlimited talk, text, and data, $44.99 for unlimited talk, text, data, and tethering, and then we have a bundle there as well that you can use, the Can't Push to Talk, or a mobile device management, and then for data-only devices, whether it be a laptop in a sheriff's office vehicle, or a hotspot, it's a base price of $37. That's all for unlimited, no, no throttling ever. And then also, I know it's important, the Senate Bill 944, if you look at the top right, previously we had contracted them directly to sell their product, which is message, text messaging archiving. Now is, we send customers to that company directly, it's referred to as SMARSH.
I want to understand, an estimate for that device for storage would be $5 to $7 per device?
Correct. $5 to $7 per device, depending on which plan you went with. One thing I didn't mention on the top left, in terms of the DIR contract, it is a two-year agreement, but it's a one-year upgrade cycle, so every 12 months you'd be able to upgrade your devices, and also the device costs upfront are free, essentially. That's starting with the iPhone XR or XR, however you prefer to it, for the Galaxy S9. We also have some rugged options as well, like most people default to iPhone.
Any upgrade, what happens to the old phone? Do we turn it into?
Normally, we take them in as trade-ins.
Okay. And I have one more question.
Sure.
You mentioned throttling. I may have missed it. What, what is meant by throttling?
So throttling in the consumer world, as you hit 22 gigs per, or 22 gigs of usage in one month, we reserve the right to throttle that speed, and on the FirstNet network, we will not throttle. It's a lot of data.
Okay, this is a, you have any questions?
What happens if the phone gives damage? A lot of work?
You are able to do insurance on it, which is $8.99 a line, but other than that, you would have to, you know, purchase and upgrade. You do get two-year upgrade pricing, if you remember back when everybody got two-year pricing, where you paid a smaller amount upfront and you were on a two-year contract. So if you were not upgrade-eligible, for example, an iPhone XR is, I want to say, $149. If they broke the device.
What's our window to participate in this? If we don't go to do it today, what's our window? There is a window.
There is a window. We have, this is a 25-year contract that we are, you know, four years...
So that $39.99 that you quoted earlier does not include the $8.95?
It does not, correct. The insurance is optional, and then any kind of text message archiving would be directly through SMARSH.
I would think we could have a county policy that would direct into that. If an employee is never going to break his phone, he may have to be responsible and repair it himself.[1799.63] and fixing it himself, or replacement, even though it's a county phone. Depending on circumstance. So, that's something we could, we could address in the county policy.
Likewise, you could have, we, a lot of times, put heavy-duty cases on.
Right.
Just hotter box, just hotter box cases.
So, if there's no trade-in for the phone, we all charge more?
If we don't trade, if you don't trade in a device?
Uh huh.
No.
The same price?
That's per terms of the DIR contract. Part of the reason that we negotiated through DIR is so that, you know, everybody can see it. If you're not familiar with DIR, all the terms and conditions are on there, public facing site. And most cities, counties default to the free device. And so, we made about 20 SKUs free, either on upgrade, upgrade-eligible, or as a new activation.
So, everybody can stay with the same number?
You can port a number in, yes.
Now, if someone ports their number in, then does that number become the county's number?
It would be, yes, sir.
I was just going to say, is this for select employees like we have it now? I mean, the county pays?
The county gives a subsidy.
Right, right. But if, so that's the employees that would have these phones?
Yes.
There's no longer a supplement that you would have, I guess, a second phone, your phone plus this one.
Okay, but, okay. But then the people who are not getting the subsidy for a phone now would not have it? Okay.
Our money person's not here today.
Yeah, the, the, I asked that question, because we don't have the auditor here. I see the Sheriff Alack shaking his head, but I would want, for a change like this, I would like to be able to officially get his input, but I don't know that we can do that until he's in office.
I spoke to the Sheriff Alack. He likes the idea. Would you like to comment on this, or?
Okay, I, just as far as being at the city marshal's stock deal, as soon as this was available, that I found out, I put that in my vehicles, so that there is a department-owned phone that has its own backup, its own storage. That's a necessity, and it's something we shouldn't be requiring them to utilize their own personal phone for work business. And I see it as a benefit, that that phone is nothing but for work, and then we don't have to worry about their personal phone, or what else they may have on.
Absolutely. We're into some of the numbers. Right now, we have 96 phones. We have stock-in-force, they cost $5,500, $500 a year. The basic plan that everybody needs, because that's the talking to, to the sheriff's office, they won't need the tethering device, so we won't need that additional $5. So, all 96, it's a basic rate of $9.99, plus I added $7 because the storage, that's $55, I think I wrote. That comes up to $46.99 per phone, at a cost of $4,511 a month, or annually of $54,133. The savings of $41,000, $57,500.
That's with insurance?
I'm sorry?
That's with insurance, please?
No. I didn't see the need for insurance, but, I mean, I didn't have that in there.
Judge, what does that potentially, what does that do for all of my guys, who use their personal phones for business? You know, if they're out on a job? I mean, if we're going to take this approach, should they have these phones as well? I know some precincts, but some precincts provide.
The price these got is all people their own.
Well, I understand, but some precincts have, have all of their people get an allowance. My people don't get an allowance, my foreman does. So, if we're going to do this, then the question is, we probably need to do this, if we're going to do it, we need to do it across the board. Because, you know, the ones.
I'd like to make the suggestion to start with, let's get law enforcement and all in that area, law enforcement, and the jailers, if any of them, I guess it would be the administrative part of the jail system, get those gone and get them started, and then see about working the rest of it again.
Well, like I said, we have one or two precincts currently that are providing cellphones to all of their employees. It seems to me, if we're going to make this, if we're going to take this approach, then it needs to be, because my guys are considered first responders, we have a problem. I mean, they're out there called to do what they need to do.
You're suggesting, because your guys don't have a phone, does any of your guys have a phone? Do all of them do?
Yeah, one or two do.
But y'all don't?
Three or four do.
I have one.
Well, I understand, but all of your employees.
Well, I have one that's going to stop him because he's the one that calls.
Okay, you have one. You have one.
Yeah. So, what I'm saying is, if we're going to do this, then, I haven't made the move, because I didn't quite frankly see the need. But if we're going to have this kind of situation expressed the way that it is expressed, then I think anyone who's considered a first responder needs to have a phone. That'll take away from the savings to a degree, but that's only fair.
Well, my deal is, is like, if we do this, I'm going to be carrying two phones.
I understand.
And my personal phone, everybody has got my personal phone number. Anybody that does business with the county, that does business with me, is going to use my personal phone. So, that's not going to change that in any way.
Unless you convert that, unless you convert your personal number to the.
Unless I do that, I really don't want to do that. Don't want to keep that.
So, you're going to have it, not use it for yourself?
So, that would be, that would be a, something for all five of us here, because I don't see, you know, anybody, any of y'all have done business with it. They're going to have a phone number on their cell phone. Just like when I call, just for example, Judge Hetkey, which number do I call for?
Well, I mean, a text or an email could, wouldn't be that.
A text or email is going to be the same.
No, what I'm saying is, you notify all of your contacts that you now, you should call with this number, this is the one in contact.
And if they get the text and transfer the number, or move the number, yes, they get it. That's just my personal, because I'd like to, you start with law enforcement, and then work from there.
Well, then, we're still going to be out of compliance with the Senate Bill, which is the real protection I'm looking for here. Because we're not saving that as mandated by that Senate Bill, the communications on our phones at this time.
Well, I see that.
We're required by law to save all our electronic communications, go over our phones. We're not doing that.
Well, I think we probably need to do it, but I think we need to work out the details before we pass it. I mean, how are we going to, how are we going to handle this? Because I, you know, I've expressed my feeling about, about our guys that are first responders. I'm not opposed to doing it, but I want, I'd like to have the details worked out before we do it.
And Michelle's got enough to get us a copy of their county's policies for CDF for their cellphones, because they have the same programs. Kind of give us an idea of what we could do to implement a policy to address.
Can I get that?
Gave you one.
Do I have one?
My thought was, on my, per, after hours, we get a call, I called my foreman, saying we've got this emergency, we can round it up to the guys. Then he calls their personal cellphones, says, all right, you are involved here to come in, so. I don't see a need, everyone having a phone, but I mean, everybody has their own situation as well. I'm sure that's how I work my policy, my policy.
Do I have any comments or questions?
I'm kind of confused by taking the phones over, because I'm just trying to round two phones.
I have this legal policy for 20 years.
Well, don't tell them. If we don't separate them, your, your personal phone becomes subject to subpoena and everything in that phone.
Does it do? It's like that now, and I don't foresee mine ever changing, even if we do this, because I'm not going to be able to contact everybody that has my cellphone number. And I'm still going to be getting phone calls, the county business on my personal phone.
On the law enforcement side, since they're going to this building network, and they will have to have hotspots with their vehicles to run the laptops, if we.
No, they haven't built it in the vehicle.
It's in the vehicle.
I actually have a question, too. That text archiving, that's a separate fee?
It's a separate company, yes. We used to actually contract directly, so it would be on the same paper. Frankly, we didn't have enough demand nationwide to keep, to keep them as a product to be sold, so we were actually directing customers directly to.
Yeah, separate fee, $5 to $7 per device.
Maybe a smaller group should convene and discuss the stipends and.
That's wait until Brenda gets back, where she can be part of that group. To take what that's do, we'll put, I'll have one for you.
Thank you.
So, the committee together to study this now, and then maybe next time we have it on the agenda, we can do something. The committees, Commissioner Hyatt, Commissioner Wylie, Brenda Torino, like, say, you have any more than that?
I'm sorry, Judge, I'm miss.
Commissioner Hyatt, Commissioner Wylie, Brenda Torino, Arthur. Y'all want to hear that? Read enough, then that will be the committee.
We'll need, I guess, as soon as Brenda gets back.
Need is, see, do something, and I don't know, we can get it back on the next agenda or the next whatever.
I have a question. Sure. Are you all FirstNet?
Me? Yes, sir. I've been for years.
Are you all FirstNet and emergency management?
I've got the hotspot. Because my personal cellphone is Sprint, I'm going to switch to AT&amp;T.
Would we be able to incorporate those accounts in the one account for the county, if we decide to add all this?
Absolutely. Most counties back up, but they like to have a separate billing account, you know, depending on department, and the department has, they'll take care of that, you know, determine who gets a phone.
Okay. So, each, each different department, I'm sure, is part of their emergency management, they would have their own account within the county?
Correct, yes. And we call, it's called a foundation account, which is the FirstNet. You know, you would have your primary users, which would be the sheriff's office, emergency management, and then extended primary could be public works, or anybody that you deem as in support of public safety. I think I gave you the example, you know, Real County, they got 15 phones, everybody is engaged in emergency, so they're all extended primary. It just depends on, you know, how it breaks down. You know, you guys determine who is eligible.
So, we could there actually start with, like, sheriff's office or emergency management, and then expand as we needed to.
Absolutely. And we have, and I don't know them all off the top of my head, but I think the sheriff's office has a line or two already, and then several emergency service districts around there. I say several, I don't, again, I don't know off the top of my head, but quite a few Wilson County area agencies have already signed up.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I have to read the presentation. Give it.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this, a further review by the committee.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt, second by Commissioner Gomez. If we table this and let the committee study and bring it back to the presentation, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back to Agenda Item Number Seven, Richard O'Jackson County Judge, Linda Torino County Audit, Discuss and Take Action of Engagement Letters for the 2019 External Financial Audit. Okay, the companies that Brenda is talking with now, Armstrong Bond and Associates, and they're out of Universal City, their price was $36,600 to $38,600, which includes the single audit that Michelle was talking about a while ago. And the other company that we used last year, they did a very good job, and they were, one thing about the representative, Jim Applewhite, that came down here, was McCall Gibson, Swedlem, and Barefoot P LLC. Their price was a total of $87,500.
Are they twice as good?
No, they got twice as good from last year.
I'm saying, are they twice as good as $38,000?
I don't know. I doubt, seriously. Because we have been using a audit company out of Pleasanton for the last 20 years, it was like $18,000 or $19,000, but they didn't cover near as much as, as our company did last year. It was a whole different thing. They, they came up with things that, that really, you're supposed to change, and that was the fifth year, we, since Tom Dubnik and I've been here, it was the fifth year, fifth year, you're supposed to change every four years, so that was the fifth year that we went to this other company. But they did an excellent job, and they did it, I guess you could call recently.
What was Brenda's assessment of Armstrong and Associates?
She has worked with them before, and she recommends them. And they also have Kerr County, Caldwell County, and Calden County, plus some other cities that they do audits for.
Now, they, did they do ours last year?
No. McCall Gibson, Swedlem, Barefoot P LLC did it.
Oh, okay, the one that set up the $87,000.
That was Tim Applewhite and his community down here. They were very professional, and they did a good job. They looked into things, did things that we hadn't seen before, and brought attention to some things that we had our attention brought to. But I think they're trying to make up for the extra stuff they did last year, this year.
I would make the motion that we approve Armstrong and Associates.
Armstrong Bond and Associates?
Yeah, that, based primarily upon the recommendation of the county auditor.
Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Hyatt. We go with Armstrong Bond and Associates for our audit. Is there any more questions or discussions? All in favor? Aye, any opposed?
I just asked, and I'll look at, send me a copy of the engagement letter, just to look at it real quick.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Agenda Item Number Nine, Richard O'Jackson County Judge, Michelle Motor, Grant's Manager, Modify and Approve the Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Fund. CESF Grant Resolution to Complete Grant Requirements and Receive Funds. Okay, reread the resolution.
Read it, don't worry, that's, this was just a housekeeping job that the state of Texas wanted us to do, basically take out the name, Alamo area council of government, and then include a statement here, basically saying that if we lose or misuse any of the money, then we will return it to the state. So, I'll go ahead and read this resolution. Resolution of the county of Wilson authorized in the filing of grant application with the Office of the Governor of the State of Texas for the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund. for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding, authorizing Richfield Jackson County Judge to act on behalf of the County of Wilson on matters related to the application, and pledging that if a grant is received, the County of Wilson will comply with the grant requirements of the O O D, federal emergency appropriations for the coronavirus health response, and the Agency Operations Act in the State of Texas. Whereas the County of Wilson finds that in the best interest of the citizens of the county, that the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund grant program be operated for the 2020 calendar year response to coronavirus pandemic. Whereas the County of Wilson in the state of Texas is qualified to apply the grant funds under the request for applications. And this is the statement that was added, whereas the County of Wilson agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the Office of Governor funds, the County of Wilson assures that the fund will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Now therefore be resolved by the Commissioner's Board of Wilson County, Texas, at its regular meeting in Fort Worth, Texas on May eleventh, 2020. Hereby unanimously voted to apply for grant funds from the C E S F program authorized by the Department of Emergency Appropriations for Coronavirus Response and Agency Operations Act. And further that Richard L. Jackson County Judge is authorized to request grant funding under the O O D's request for applications of the C E S F program enacted on behalf of the County of Wilson on matters related to the grant application, and any subsequent grant, contract, and grant project that may result. And further that if the project is funded, the County of Wilson will comply with the grant requirements of the Office of the Governor, and the Safety Office, and the State of Texas. And further that the grant funds and any grant-funded equipment of facilities will be used for the purposes for which they are intended under the grant. And further that activities will comply with and support the requirements and goals of funding in which the activities are performed. And when is there, Commissioner's Board of Wilson County and Fort Worth, Texas pass this resolution, and therefore set our hands on this ninth phase of the requirement. And, um, this is basically the last requirement, and we should receive the funds. And these are, once again, expenditures that we've already incurred, from September first to June fifteenth.
Y'all heard the old saying about, you gotta have all of your i's not in your t's to get a grant, well, this is proof. Just a matter of a single phrase, phrase, that's on the resolution, that kept us from getting grants, or is slowing it down. What was the total?
Uh, it wasn't over there, it's over a hundred sixteen thousand. It was on last, Commissioner's Board of Wilson.
And he's been on the resume?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so this will be reimbursed, this will reimburse the county.
I'm making a worse of the journal.
Motion by Commissioner Gomez, second by Commissioner Fowles, we approved a new resolution. Is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got a new resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Okay, getting down to the getting ready part, agenda item number ten, Leanne Hooch, A M C, ten A, non-standard class appearances. Twelve fifty-nine, Morning Glory Lane, precinct four, F and S Homes, discussing, take action.
Okay, this is a non-standard class request that came before the Development Committee, uh, last week, was given a favorable recommendation. Uh, property owners own, they dream to tract in woodlot acres off Morning Glory, and there's, uh, request was to subject our unit to three lots.
So never, never had a house or a dwelling of any sort, and it's raw land?
Raw land.
Meets all of our requirements?
And he gave it a favorable recommendation.
I have a question for somebody, how many you think that you have to have to receive? How many acres? One?
Well, it's in a subdivision, one, yeah.
Outside of subdivision?
Well, out on open land, a half acre.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Fowles, we approve, please, sit in front of them. Anybody got any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ten B, subdivision of Regal Acre at nine, ten B one, discussing, take action on the use of construction letter of credit.
Okay, of Regal, uh, falls under the previous regulations, and, uh, is where, once the roads were built and constructed, and applied for second, uh, they, they were allowed to reduce the financial guarantee amount. So, um, the developer has presented us with a amended letter of credit. So prior to accepting the maintenance letter of credit, uh, we need to release the construction letter of credit.
That would be precinct four.
It's a beautiful doing, precinct four.
Is it last unit?
I'm not sure yet.
Not sure yet?
Yeah, maybe.
You're still outland in the back?
A little bit, we have a hundred thirty-one acres still, but we're, we're trying to decide what we're gonna do with that.
I make a motion, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Fowles, we release the letter of credit, is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The letter, construction letter of credit has been released, now we're going to ten B two, discussing, take action on acceptance of maintenance letter of credit. Eighty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty.
And that's for a wonder maintenance credit.
I make a motion if we accept that, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Wylie, second by Commissioner Fowles, we accept the letter, maintenance letter of credit. Is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Maintenance letter of credit. Okay, now we're going to ten B three, discussing, take action on acceptance of dedication and conveyance of roads.
And the roads have been constructed, and all the specialists have been done, and all the farm has been get, so it's time for them to accept the roads.
I make a motion, we make precinct four just a little bit larger.
Have, have they had any miles, or eight mile or?
About forty-four.
About a little under a mile.
A little under a mile, okay, motion by Commissioner Wylie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fowles, do we accept the roads? Is there any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got the roads. Thank you, Judge. Okay, moving right on to agenda item number eleven, Edwin Baker, Health and Public Safety, enacting the burn ban, discuss and take action.
Uh, I put it on there, not knowing when we're gonna kick back up to those ten points a day that we're gonna try out, and we haven't started there yet. And in my opinion, I think we can wait another two weeks and relook at it, and see if we get more rain, because we're not quite where we really need to be to enact the burn ban. Uh, I think it'd be a little early premature if we did it today.
I'm sorry to hear that, because every time you do a burn ban, it rains.
I was hoping I could do it, and it was just the only agenda in work, though. So anyway, I, I'd recommend that we don't go into it, we'll wait till the next Commissioner's Board and look at it again.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts on that? Okay, let's move on along to agenda item number twelve, E V S Martinez, County clerk minutes.
Uh, I've handled some votes, and they have been properly reviewed by yourself and our, this guy.
Motion, Commissioner Fowles, accept the minutes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt, is there any discussion, any questions, any changes, all in favor?